I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Bryan City Council meeting for Monday, November 6th, 2017. First item on our agenda this evening is to approve the minutes of the October 16th Joint Executive Session and the October 16th Council Meeting. Council, you've been given those minutes. Any additions or corrections?
I move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Second item on the agenda is the Hearing of Public Concerns. Is there anyone who would like to come forward? Seeing no one, at this time I'll move on to item number three, which is an ordinance. Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-three, 2017. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the probation department as they have received additional grant funds from the state of Ohio. So they are requesting $12,000 in wages, $1,680 in purse, $273.18 in comp, and $175.07 in Medicare, for a total of $14,128.25. In addition, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting that a $2,000 donation from Bryan Municipal Utilities for Streets be appropriated for operating supplies. Total amount of appropriation requested: $16,128.25.
Make a motion to approve.
We would never suspend.
Suspend.
Sorry.
Suspend.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Item number four on our agenda this evening is another ordinance. Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-four, 2017. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for Bryan Protection Services to the Board of Commissioners of Williams County for Hillside Country Living, Updike Park, and the Williams County Park Building for years 2018 and 2019.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is an annual contract that we have to do with county commissioners for fire protection for those county properties that are out north of town for the for the Updike Park that's out there for Hillside Country Living. So I ask that council would suspend and approve this ordinance tonight so that we can move forward and get the contracts to the commissioners to be approved and back in time for the first of the year.
I move we suspend.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is another ordinance. Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-five, 2017. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2018 to Palaski Township.
Again, this is another ordinance for the fire protection for Palaski Township for next year. So again, I would ask that council suspend and pass this so that we can get it through the process.
Make a motion to suspend.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
The next item on our agenda is another ordinance. Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-six, 2017. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number two for the project known as 2017 100 Block East South Street Improvements for a change to the contract amount.
Mr. Whelan?
Good evening. How are we doing tonight?
Good.
As you can see, we wrapped up the East South Street project and we ended up having a net add of $4,931.95. You can scroll through the list and see what some of the adds and deducts were, but for the most part, it was just little incidentals that a little extra sidewalk, a little extra driveway, a little less asphalt. But with that, I would request you suspend the rules and approve so we can get this project closed out.
I move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
May I ask a question about that corner there that you were just completing? I've had some people ask me why we didn't do eminent domain and go over further to the south to, so we didn't have the curb that's already been run over by semis.
If we widen the curb out more, they just would have took more. They would have kept running over the curb. No matter how big you make the intersection, the trucks are still going to do that. I feel if we would have taken something by eminent domain, it would have made the lot not worthwhile enough for them to actually improve it because right now they can only put a 24-foot wide, excuse me, deep building in that lot based on the setbacks that we have. So if we take 10 feet away, their building would only be 14 feet wide. So my opinion is if we took a strip by eminent domain, we would have had to buy the whole thing and it was not cost-effective for us to do.
Along that line, on the northwest corner, by the insurance company there, the curb is up maybe two feet, three feet, or something like that.
Right.
You know, as they make that turn. But first of all, there's no trucks, I even think, allowed down on West South Street there so they wouldn't be turning right and going west.
That wall was there for retaining wall to keep dirt from falling in.
I'm sorry?
That wall was put there as a retaining wall to keep dirt and the house foundation from falling into the right way. That one there was.
It's not out on the curb?
No. It's behind the curb. We have a handicap ramp there for sidewalks on the front side.
Would that have helped on the other side?
I'm afraid it would have opened us up to more legal issues because we put an obstruction in the right way that they're going to hit. I've got some signage ordered to put in there, so if a truck hits it, hopefully they'll get a flat tire and they'll learn the next time.
The other, tell your other plan.
Well, I
What we think we should do?
I'm going to ponder concreting a strip behind the curb so when they do drive over it, they won't rut up the grass. They'll sit on concrete. I couldn't do it now because the curb's green and the dirt behind there hasn't settled yet. It would have just broke up and it was bad doing that going into winter. So, you know, the old methodology is if you want to learn where to put sidewalks, go out after it snows and see where the people walk and that's where you put sidewalks. Let it go through the season, see how far back they go, and then if we only need to put a five-foot concrete strip in, we will. But I plan on doing something in the spring.
So it looks like a sidewalk then?
Yes and no.
It'll be tamped.
Yeah.
Sloped. Sloped.
I've had conversations with other department heads and whatnot here and we've talked about what we could and can't legally do. And obviously, we can't put a big cement block there because it will create a traffic hazard. But we've got some plans that we're going to do here. So you'll see a little more signage go up and we'll address some concrete in the spring just to keep the grass from getting rutted up.
To kind of talk to what I think Tommy was alluding to, Archbolt Head, a bell-shaped device on the walk, and one of the problems that they ran into, it's no longer there because trucks were still running over that, catching their dooleys on there and you'd have to bring in a wrecker to get them moved. And so it just wasn't worth the hassle.
Someone had placed a large rock down in front of Little Caesar's on the corner of Walnut Street and cars had actually hit it and pushed it out. I think after the fourth time, the street department had to come out after hours to move it. They relocated it. So it's not good practice to do that.
If you go to Archbolt, look at that post that they put in there. It's all black on one side, but look where the trucks have hit, going around the corner.
So we're looking into it. We'll do something a little more in the spring, but some signage for now to kind of help. Manual uniform traffic control devices tells me I can put yellow signs with black stripes on it to advise drivers of an obstruction chasing to the roadway. So we're going to try that here and see what happens. And if they just knock them over the first day, then we'll just let it go over the winter and do some concrete in the spring. But I guess, go ahead, sorry.
We had talked and the traffic switch wasn't installed right away, so some of it was the cars
Some of the cars were pulling forward.
That were pulling back along that line and pulling forward. So the semis were still avoiding them by going up on the curb.
The way that intersection is designed, like Carrie says, the traffic is pulled back to the east far enough that when trucks are heading north in turn, east, the front of the semi can actually go into the northern lanes and swing around. So there's ample room there for a 53-foot semi trailer to make the turn, swinging into that north lane. But like Carrie alluded to, the first day, I think someone was actually pulled all the way up where they used to be, up by the sidewalk, and the semi couldn't make the turn, and there they went, so.
There are so many people who think that the sidewalk is where they need to stop rather than back at the stop line.
Correct. That's what a stop bar is for. We had that conversation before the meeting here, actually, with a couple of people that you stop at the stop bar, period.
And I think you're right because that is happening. I've noticed that the cars are now back farther.
Right. And if they go forward, they'll learn.
It doesn't activate the light either, does it?
No, if you go forward, it doesn't. So they'll sit there for five minutes and it won't change, so that's fine. But hope I answered your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next item is a resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number thirty-one, 2017. A resolution for a then-and-now purchase certifying adequate funds were available.
This summer was pretty busy for our office and we neglected to write a purchase order for the Town Line and Center Street project. We found that out here a few weeks ago when we were trying to see how much money we had left to complete the sewer project and we realized we had an extra $125,000 laying there. So we completed a project. Purchase order, we wrote it. We haven't had a bill yet, but we just feel it's better to have you guys go ahead and authorize the then-and-now purchase order after the fact. Just keeps Lori's books cleaner. So with that, I'd ask you to suspend the rules and do that, please.
Okay, I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the second reading of a resolution. Lori?
Resolution number thirty, 2017. A resolution to accept a donation of land located at 301 East Butler Street, Bryan, Ohio, commonly known as Lincoln Elementary School property, containing 93,726 square feet, 2.152 acres of land, more or less.
We had the first reading on this.
Yes.
And it was partly because I had asked that, because I had heard some complaints. I have heard nothing since the last meeting. Can we now suspend the rest of that? Okay, I would move to do that then.
I've heard nothing either. I'll second.
Judy?
You got it.
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Accept the, go ahead.
Move to approve. Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Item number nine on the agenda is a resignation in the Fire Department. Chief Siders.
Yes, Zach Fisher has moved out of the area. He's actually working at the City of Fort Wayne Fire Department and he's no longer able to fulfill his obligation here at Bryan. So he has submitted his resignation. I ask council to accept that resignation.
I move we accept the resignation. And with, Rick, thank you.
I'll second with regret.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is remove a volunteer firefighter. Chief Siders?
Yes, probationary firefighter Randy Groll has not responded to any fire calls or training since the 22nd of September. I have been in contact with Randy and asked him about it. He said he still wanted to be on the department. I told him he needed to start showing up, start coming to training. He has not done so, so I'm asking that council remove him as a member of the department.
Council?
I move we accept this recommendation.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Siders. Next item is an employee status change in the Police Department. Chief Willis.
Evening.
Good evening.
I would like to recommend Mason Hammond be appointed to regular full-time status with the Police Department. This will be effective November 7th, 2017. He has successfully completed his one-year probation with the department.
I move we accept the recommendation.
Second. Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Then we have a resignation of a part-time?
No, this is still eleven.
No, it's still eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. There's two of them. Threw me off there for a second. Chief Willis?
Okay. Again, council, I'd like to recommend that Alexandra Smith be appointed as the dispatch records clerk with the Police Department. This will be effective Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. The dispatch records clerk position opened because of the retirement we had within that unit. Alex will be on probation for six months. Just a little bit about her. She started with the Police Department in 2015 and is currently Police Fighter Dispatcher. She does hold a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal law. She's received training in both the basic and advanced record retention. She would be in charge of the leads, the leads coordinator. She would oversee the dispatch as far as training, the reports, planning, and assigning work up there. Any complaints that would come in with the dispatcher, she would get with the captain because the captain oversees the dispatching unit and they would get that taken care of. She'd also be in charge of wreckage destruction and sending reports to the proper state offices.
I move we approve. Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Now we move on to item number 12, which is resignation of a part-time employee.
This was a letter written to my office and it says, "Dear Mayor and Council, please accept this formal notice of my resignation from the city of Bryan. This will be effective immediately and it's signed Sherry Cooper." As you know, Sherry Cooper did work in records and dispatch up at the Police Department, very good on the telephones and public and so forth, but she retired and she's running into the problem and a lot of retirees are when they try to come back and work even part-time, they get penalized by the insurance rates going up. It's not a PERS thing so much as it is the insurance part of it. And in researching that a little bit, that law could change and go back to allowing some people to work part-time and have been in PERS, but that being affected would be maybe in the next 100 days. It depends really on what President Trump does with the health insurance bill and so forth. So that could change, but at this time, she has to resign. I think she made about $40 and they raised her insurance $75, working part-time. So she kind of got hit by that, not allowed to do it at this point. So she has no recourse, but we need people like that to just help us out part-time if they're available. We'll keep pushing to try to get changes in that, but see what happens. So we have to accept her resignation because she doesn't want to keep that high insurance rate.
Lose the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully just for now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. She's a good person.
Your wishes?
I move to accept with regret.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. We will be going into executive session for the purposes of compensation of personnel. But first, I'd like to go around the room and see if there's anything further from our department heads. Mr. Domine?
Thank you. Real quickly, I just wanted to thank Kevin and the BPA for their $2,000 donation towards our Street Tree program. They've done it for many years. It helps us to replace trees in the curbs, whether it be through projects or just areas that need trees replaced. BPA has always seen this as an important project between the two of us and we're very grateful for their support with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Domine. Chief Willis, do you have anything further?
No.
Mr. Whelan? Chief Siders?
No, sir.
Anything from BMU, BPA?
We are having a meeting with the large customers on Thursday morning in conference room A and B in the Williams County community offices. Certain of our members are going to be talking a little bit about electric costs and some ways that the customers can save money. The gas companies are also going to be talking about their projected rates and the rate that they had for distribution.
Okay. Went forward to that meeting. Thank you. Mr. Day?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Oh, one thing. Everybody get out and vote tomorrow.
That's just what I was going to say. Please vote. It is an honor that we get to do that, so please make use of it.
Mrs. Slade?
I agree. Please vote. It's a responsibility we have.
Lori?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fisher? Mayor?
I think tonight we have some members. How many from the leadership are here? Okay, they attended. They have been on tours in our building. They've been out to all departments so far and they're gaining a lot of experience and they're our future council people or mayors or whatever down the line. So welcome. I hope you learned a little bit of something tonight and we welcome you here. And since Kevin took my speech away, if you are going to this, you're supposed to call the chamber office and make a reservation if you plan to attend this eight o'clock meeting at the AM. AM.
We're not going to get an RCP from you.
So call tomorrow if you want to go on next day, Thursday or so forth. So basically, that's all I have.
Okay. I just want to say tomorrow is a very important day for the city of Bryan in a lot of different ways, especially for council and the mayorship. And we are going to be under new leadership starting next year regardless